Welcome. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a meeting of the North Penn School District's Board of School Directors, February 12th, 2013. Tonight is a special action meeting followed by a regular work session. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware they're being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of the Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the audience's logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their comments and questions. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker, and that's in reference to Board Policy 8340. Good evening, again. Let's start with a pledge of allegiance run by or led by Mr. Schilling.
I pledge allegiance to the Bible and to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We start off all action meetings, and this is a special action meeting with audience of citizens. Anyone wishing to speak to the board, please come forward, state your name and address.
My name is William J. Patchell, and I reside at 404 Bonnie Lane in Lansdale. I have two children, one which has graduated, is attending the Citadel, and my daughter, which is a senior, which will soon graduate. I want to recommend to the public that this is a very serious meeting, and the things that will be decided tonight have far-reaching implications for every stakeholder, for the children which attend the district, and for people yet unaccounted for. There will be numerous topics tonight, but we must know the cause. Many in the district thinks it's dysfunctional labor contracts. State government mandates have placed the district in the most perilous financial conditions we have ever faced. Many senior citizens are struggling. This is the reason Act One was put into place, to contain overzealous school districts from taxing and taxing and spending and taxing. This is why Act One was put into place, so that this would stop, and there would be open dialogue where all stakeholders could interact and arrive at a situation which would be mutually respectful of every party. I must remind you that Act One was set in place to contain districts, to be mindful, mindful, yes, mindful, of the sacrifices already made by the retired taxpayers, the small business people, people that are challenged financially with a declining GDP in the United States, where many are not participating in the American dream anymore. The tapeworm of pensions, as described by our governor, is eating into every budget. There is no solution. And I just got, I just got finished with Todd Stevens' telephone town meeting, and this was brought up over and over and over by each person that would call in. What are you going to do about these pensions? What are you going to do? I think the cumulative effect is about $42 billion, but that's to be decided later on. Yes, the legislature will act soon. There will be no more defined pensions for the new hires. Oh, they'll be like all the other people that are laboring in America now. No early retirements. Yes, you need to work until you're 62. I, for myself, am getting sick and tired of people 55 years old topping out with a salary of about $85,000 or $90,000, going to another state, and then our hard-earned tax monitoring, whether it be directed from Harrisburg or wherever it would go, goes to people that are no longer affiliated with the district, and then we have new entrants enjoying the same dysfunctional labor contract that few of the stakeholders enjoy. How many people in this district, and I will tell you that the average income in this district is far lower than the compensation received by many of the employees of this district? So this is the, this is the main core reason why you have a dysfunctional budget. It wasn't your fault. It was probably put in place long ago, and you had nothing to do with it. So it needs to be corrected. So I support the application of these charter schools, because what America needs now is not more communistic, one answer situation supplied by people that really are far removed from them, although they say they are very caring. Most dictators say, oh, yes, we are very caring about your condition. Why? They fear creative competition. Creative competition with labor rates that are negotiated in a much different climate than what we have here. Much different. You fear this because, you fear the charter schools because, number one, you will lose an awful lot of money. It won't be $7 to $10 million. It'll be $20 or $30 million, because I believe out of 10,200 people, I believe 500 will choose to migrate to a smaller, more friendly, more cozy environment. They do not want to go to what is becoming, what is becoming today is an armed camp that some on the board have even suggested we need to have armed guards. I suggest that is not a friendly, homey environment that is giving education the highest standard. It's becoming more like a penitentiary. I don't think people want this, and I think people ought to and deserve to have some type of decision about where their kids want to go. And if you lose 500, reward those people and say, "I wish you the best on your less-travel road."
Mr. Patchell, you have five minutes.
Okay. I'm just completing right now. You will earnestly nitpick to prevent the establishment of these academic avenues, but should you turn this down, it will go to arbitration. I tell you, it will go to arbitration. This movement will not be contained by this group alone. It will go to arbitration and be successful, so don't lose heart. It will go down to arbitration. I tell you the outcome. Montgomery Flex and the others will be here. You will not, you do not hold the sole solutions to academic achievement. This is why there are small colleges, state colleges. They're all varied institutions, giving solutions in varied ways to varied people with varied talents. Every child is different. Some choose a small, friendly, dedicated environment, not willing to go such to a large school that is gradually, as I said, yes, a secure fort-like prison with even armed guards. Yes, the local police officer comically shot himself in the foot. I'm sure that would have been really good at the high school. He was from Upper Gwinnett, I believe. In closing, yes, you will lose 500 children, but you will be giving them a choice. Thank you very much.
My name is Laura Boquist, and I live in Harleysville, Pennsylvania, 100 Candlewood Way. As a taxpayer and parent of three children in the North Penn School District, I urge the vote to, I urge the board to vote no on the three charter applications before you this evening. There are 12,691 students in this district, and we educated an average cost, including regular and special ed students, $16,528 per student. We are obligated to provide an education for each of our students using taxpayer dollars in the most effective way possible. According to the charters' applications, which are available on the district website, first-year projections for all three charters total 545 students, 4% of our total student population. At $16,500 per student, the district would pay these charters approximately $9 million in that first year. In my opinion, spending $9 million on 4% of our student population is not an effective use of our budget dollars, especially as our district is trying to close a large budget gap through spending cuts. As a taxpayer, I am concerned about the financial impact to this district. A neighboring district with a charter school has had to increase its taxes and close one of its schools. I'm concerned that our taxes will need to increase further to pay for the charter schools, on top of tax increases that are already needed to serve our current schools. As a mother, I am greatly concerned about the educational impact to my children and the remaining 96% of students in North Penn. I am concerned about increased class sizes as the district continues its hiring freeze. I'm concerned about the emotional impact in the classroom. Will my child receive the same individual attention as class sizes increase? I'm concerned about teachers and staff needing to take on more and more responsibilities as positions are not being replaced. I'm concerned that successful and needed enrichment activities, clubs, excellent music programs, and other opportunities will be cut for the remaining 96% in our schools. Each one of these charter applications has promoted smaller class sizes, as well as the ability to provide individual learning plans and enrichment opportunities that will benefit their students. It is ironic that approving these charters might negatively affect these very same concepts for the 96% of North Penn students who will remain in our schools. I do not support charter schools in North Penn School District. Please vote no on these applications this evening. Thank you.
Anyone else, please, step forward. Gentlemen, if you want to, you can line up behind them.
Good evening. My name is Mark Lee, 628 Jones Avenue, Lansdale. Not as polished as everybody else here. I'm just going to tell you about personal experience. Let me begin by saying I would want you guys to vote no against the charter school applications. I work at a juvenile facility, and over, I would probably say 50 or 60% of our kids, they have left public schools, and their parents have put them in charter schools. They have told me personally they've done worse in the charter schools, for various reasons. I think that, I moved here, I've been in the district, I'm originally from Abington. I've been in the district for about, I guess, 12 years. I have a ninth grader and a third grader, and they're doing excellent. They're doing absolutely excellent. Just because you say in a classroom, instead of 20 kids, we'll make it five, that doesn't mean they work, they learn better. It doesn't mean, that doesn't mean that at all. You know, a lot of charter schools think so, but I tend not to think so. And also, I have three friends right now, as we speak. We're very well-educated. They want to form a charter school in Philadelphia, and we talk about it, we joke, friends, we all come up together. We all come up together. I ask them, "Why you want to form a charter school?" "Because it's a way to make money." That's it. Nothing about educating the kids or anything like that, because that's the newest thing. It's a way to make money. So with that being said, that's all I say. I hope you vote no against, you know, putting charter schools in the district. Thank you.
Hopefully you received my written remarks, but I will go through them anyway. My name is Alan Stendall, 106 Springdale Lane, Lansdale. I'm resident taxpayer, parent, and voter. I would like you to vote against the charter school initiatives, because I see no benefit for the taxpayers, particularly in the general draw elementary schools. An 85-seat elementary school like the one proposed would simply result in the closing of no classrooms in any of our elementary schools, no reduction to costs for North Penn, and would withdraw $1.3 million from the budget. My question is, how would you deal with that? My feeling is that it'll probably be cuts to smaller programs such as art, music, intramural sports, or other smaller programs. The disaster that can be created by charter schools can be viewed in our neighbor to the south and east Philadelphia, where they now have 70,000 empty seats created by general draw charters. If you go to the charter program, I would highly recommend that you do them on a catchment area basis, as opposed to a general draw. That way, at least, it would result in a savings to the taxpayers. I'm also a satisfied customer of the North Penn School District. I view the schools here as being either good or bitter, and any charter school would be essentially an experiment. Thank you.
I live at 309 Grit Road, Upper Gwinnett Township. I've been a resident of the North Penn School District for 22 years, and I've raised four children in the North Penn schools. I went online to review the applications the other night of these charter school proposals, and some things became apparent to me. The three schools will take millions, as we've heard, of dollars out of the North Penn School District in order to run small, private schools at public expense. Each charter school will have their own school board selected by a very small group of people. This small group will control millions of dollars in local taxpayers' money for the benefit of this small, select group of students. The North Penn School Board is accountable to us every election cycle. These mini boards are not. They each will be hiring more than likely nurses, custodian, security personnel, chief executive officers, administrative staff. They'll be paying rent and utilities, making a profit, and then they'll be hiring teachers with the money that's left over. North Penn already pays for these services. Now we're going to take this money to duplicate these services elsewhere many times over? This is a poor use of our taxpayer dollars. Their applications are pretty lengthy, but nothing appeared to be really innovative that isn't being done in this school district, or couldn't be done in this school district, like full-day kindergarten? Hint, hint. North Penn has the blessing of a diverse student body, a broad array of services and support systems, and numerous opportunities that these charter schools will not be able to offer. Please vote against the creation of these charter schools. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Tina Stoll. I live at 132 Wentworth Drive in Montgomery Township. And I'm very pleased to see all this opposition, actually, to the charter schools. I wasn't quite knowing what to expect tonight. I'd come to the previous meeting, and I heard all the proposals for the charter schools, and all the parents that came up and spoke in favor of them. And while I understand the need or the desire to give your children choices, and, you know, what you feel is best for them, I really don't believe that the charter schools are the answer. I think, I had three kids go through the North Penn School District, and I could not be happier with all the educational choices that they had, the extracurricular activities they went through. It was just an amazing experience, and I completely support the North Penn School District. And I would think it would be a real shame to take the money away from the North Penn School District to support these charter schools. Like the man said before me, don't really offer anything different. And what would concern me more are these recent reports of the performance rates of these charter schools. They don't really seem to be doing that well. I read anywhere between 28% to 30%, 37% of the charter schools have met benchmark requirements. That's pretty sad. You know, if you can't even meet benchmark requirements, I don't know why you would even want to send your kid there. So I'm glad that there's all this opposition, and I hope you guys vote no for the charter school applications. Thank you.
My name is Dan Meyer. I live at 403 Perkyomen Avenue. I taught at North Penn for a year. I think it's a tremendous school, as I said the first time I was here. It was bar none. It was absolutely tremendous. And let me preface this with, I can only appreciate how difficult this decision is for you, the board. I know you guys have our interests, the community, at heart, so I understand this is with a heavy heart that we have to go through this. Two things stick out to me, though. I heard the comments about, are we really going to try to help maybe only 4% of our population, and is this really the best way to spend our money, our budgets? And I understand that these are very difficult times, and these are arduous decisions that we have to make. I would just pose this question to us: Can we really boil our children down to, "Well, it's only 4% that we could help," or, "That's extra money"? I just think that our children deserve better. I think that we could give them an opportunity, so please vote yes. For at least ING, that's ENG, that's the only one that I can speak for, because I've researched that, but I just really think that these children deserve the opportunity. It's about them, not about us. Let's just change our perspectives and put them first. So I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Beth Staub. I live in the North Penn School District, and I have three children that attend. I live at 143 Addison Lane in Montgomery Township. I know that we're all here to represent what's best for our children, keeping in mind the taxpayer situation, but I'm really here about being a parent. I have three boys, and I made the very, very difficult decision several years ago to pull my children out of North Penn School District, to bring them to a charter school. I brought them, one of them I pulled out in third grade and stayed through fifth. The other went from kindergarten through first grade. I can say I loved the situation at the charter school. The class sizes were smaller. They'd full-day kindergarten. The teachers were amazing, and it was a warm environment. However, I also made the very hard decision to take, pull them out of the charter school and bring them back to North Penn. I felt as if the, what we were trying to create, and what I was hoping for, was a perfect situation of, that would provide things like extracurricular activities, having band, orchestra, chorus, having sports, having a playground, having a cafeteria, a library, having a warm community of where my children could go out and play with the friends from school in the neighborhood. That didn't happen, because they were spread out so much. I have to, with a very hard heart, and I know my children's teachers are here, and it pains me to say this in front of them, I loved their teachers. This is not about that, and it's not personal at the charter school, but I have to say that my children, they really thrived at the charter school, but they are soaring at North Penn. And I appreciate all that North Penn has now even more, because I've seen it from both sides. So I'm hoping that my perspective will be useful for you in making a hard decision of voting no on the charter schools. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you for everyone being here tonight. My name is Dr. Mary Ellen Gaines. I have a PhD in health and family sociology, and I would like to speak about the emotions that are changing within children today. In the past couple decades, family life has drastically changed for children. Parents are often dual-earner families. They don't have as much time as they used to have to spend on the emotional development and social development of children. I'm a professor at Montgomery County Community College, and when I get incoming freshmen into college, they are severely depleted with not knowing how to interact properly, not knowing their own basic emotional needs. They don't know how to create interpersonal relationships, and this is becoming something that I've witnessed over the past 10 years of teaching, that continually, and also due to increased technology, certain families do not have the resources, the skills, or the capability to provide children with the kinds of resources that they need emotionally to develop into healthy, productive citizens in our society. And because I've witnessed this, I do see charter schools as a place that can increase interaction and emotional ability, because the type of setting isn't an authoritarian speak-at-you setting, but the setting is much more inter actionable, where children are given activities, they can speak with one another, they learn to become leaders, they learn how to voice their opinions, and they're given a lot more one-on-one time, which might not be true in all families. There might be families that are able to do that, but there might be families that are unable to do that, and this is where the charter school can be a saving device for children to do not get those emotional skills in their household. Because if we see the increased technology, we see that many children are left alone on the internet for long hours, left alone to watch television for many hours, and they don't have that one-on-one interaction they need for healthy human social development to create the society that we want. And because I'm a sociologist, I'm deeply concerned about that. And so I just want to say to vote yes for education for new generations charter school. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Mancini. I am a parent of three children currently in the school district. I live at 809 Patterson Drive in Lansdale. I don't have prepared statements I hadn't intended to speak, but that being said, having looked at the application, seeing what the potential benefits are, my opinion is that those resources that would be siphoned away from the school district are better served by putting them back into the school district. You know, Speaker earlier had said that our children deserve better, and I think that better is achieved by enhancing the education in the North Penn School District rather than moving those funds out of the district. My wife and I, as I said, we have three children, and we've been very happy with the education that they've gotten into with Penn. Thank you.
All right. We're going to move forward with our agenda. The next item on our agenda is recommend approval of the minutes of the 1,003, I'm sorry, 1,003 meeting held on January 17, 2013, as circulated.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments about the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. We're going to go through the superintendent's report. Dr. Tietz, would you start off with 3A?
Yes. Recommend approval of the preliminary 2013-2014 budget. The administration is authorized to seek required referendum exceptions in accordance with Act One.
Motion by Mr. Meniskalko, second by Mr. Lattick. Comments or questions to this?
Yeah, I would just like to comment that this is the preliminary budget, not the final budget, and I'm going to vote to approve this recommended budget with the exceptions, but that's not an indication of what my final vote would be when the final budget comes up for a vote.
Thank you. So noted. Anyone else?
Well, once again, as we do every year now, because of this pushed, or the budget coming up so early, we just don't know enough, and we don't have enough information to really make informed decisions. It's unfortunate, but, I mean, you know, public needs to know that. You know, the budget, the state budget's still sort of up in the air. We don't know what the federal budget's going to give us, so there's all kinds of things that, so it's premature, but we're forced to do it nonetheless.
Any other comments? Mr. Schach, would you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Lattick? Yes. Mr. Kerr?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Miniscalco? Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
No.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Shapinski?
No.
Seven in favor, two opposed.
Motion carries. We're going to move forward with the next recommendation. I'd like to turn this over to our solicitor, Mr. Dooly.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. With regard to the next three items on the board's agenda, these are all the rendering of the decisions on the applications of the three separate applications for charter school approval. Let me just state generally that the school board, in reviewing these, was confined to review these with regard to the criteria set forth in the Pennsylvania Charter School Law and the Pennsylvania School Code. With regard to these applications before the board, based upon a thorough review of the written material submitted by the Montgomery-Flex Charter School, the Education for New Generations Charter School, and the North Penn Charter School Collaborative, as well as questions and responses recorded at the public hearings held on December 3 and 4, 2012, before the board and following discussion thereafter, the board directed our office to prepare decisions denying each of these applications. The reasons for the denials are as follows. This would, Mr. President, first be with regard to Item 3B, which is the application of the Montgomery-Flex Charter School. In pertinent part, the written decision denies that application for the failure by the applicant to conform to the legislative intent of the Pennsylvania Charter School Law. The evidence presented during the hearing indicates that the school is not designed to improve pupil learning, particularly when compared with the demonstrated success of the students in the district. Also, the applicant failed to demonstrate sustainable support for the charter school plan by teachers, parents, other community members, and students. Mr. President, that matter is now ready for approval.
Do I have a motion? So moved. Motion by Mr. Schilling?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Leonard. Comments or questions? Roll call, please, Mr. Schach.
Mr. Lattick?
Yes.
Mr. Kerr?
Yes.
Mr. Miniscalco?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Shapinski?
Yes.
Motion passes. Recommend the second discussion, please.
Yes, Item 3C deals with the decision on the application for Education for New Generations Charter School. As I indicated, the board directed my office to prepare a decision denying this application for the following reasons. Failure demonstrate a capability to provide a comprehensive learning experience to students. The applicant failed to provide sufficient evidence of an English-as-a-second language or ESL program. Applicant failed to submit sufficient evidence of startup funding. The applicant failed to submit a copy of its contract with Charter Choices, which is an essential component of the application. This is due to the fact that the applicant plans to outsource all financial, accounting, and business operations. Further, the applicant failed to demonstrate sustainable support for the charter school plan by teachers, parents, other community members, and students. Mr. President, that matter is now ready for action.
Recommend approval of the decision of the school directors in the matter of the charter school application for Education for New Generations Charter School. So moved. Do I have a motion? So moved. Motion by Mr. Sullivan, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Petition is approved. Let's move on to D, 3D, please.
3D, Mr. President, would then be the application of the North Penn Charter School Collaborative. The decision for the, before the board denies that application for the following reasons. The failure of the applicant to demonstrate a capability to provide comprehensive learning experiences to students. The failure of the applicant to adequately identify a physical facility in which the charter school would be located. The application contained inadequate details regarding the potential lease arrangements. The applicant failed to provide the curriculum to be offered at the school. The applicant failed to demonstrate that it is prepared to meet the needs of students with disabilities. Further, the applicant failed to provide adequate evidence as to how provide liability and other appropriate insurance. And the applicant failed to demonstrate sustainable support for the charter school plan by teachers, parents, other community members, and students. That matter is now ready for action, Mr. President.
Recommend approval of the decision of the school directors in the matter of the charter school application for North Penn Charter School Collaborative. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy, second by Mr. Sullivan. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Wait, hold on, hold on.
Just one comment. I think we all recognize that Sauterton, as I understand, has a charter school that apparently is doing a good job. But my understanding is we are bound to review this application based on the application itself and the hearing that was held in this building. And that's what, the reason for my vote.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please, Mr. Schach.
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Lattick?
Yes.
Mr. Kerr?
Yes.
Mr. Miniscalco?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Shapinski?
Yes.
Motion passes. One in favor. Dr. Dietrich, would you move on with the agenda?
I will. Item E is to recommend approval of the municipal deposit resolution with first Niagara Bank per Item BA 2.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions about the deposit resolution? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Letter F, recommend approval of the compensation plan for tax collectors for the years 2014 through 2018 per Item 06-13.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell. Well, we had public comment before, but I will give an opportunity for you to speak if you choose to. Hold on, hold on. I want, we have a motion, we don't have a second. Does anyone else want to make an alternative motion?
Hold on, hold on.
We have a motion, we don't have a second to the motion for the tax collector compensation.
Well, then I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Sullivan.
Okay.
Now we can have a discussion. Any comments or questions about the conversation from the board, please? Any conversations on this side, please?
Yeah, I think there was some, I think there was a problem with communicating to our tax collectors. And recently, there was two finance committee meetings that they wanted to attend to explain their side of this issue, and they never got the chance to do that. So, you know, I'd like to hear from them and see where we are on this thing.
Fair enough. What would we like to hear? We have a motion and a second. Do we have a, you want to hear further?
Well, we can.
Or would you rather have a second motion? You want to table it?
Yeah, I was going to say, can we, to table the motion?
Oh, wait. If we motion, does there a motion to table that motion, the first one?
Well, I want to understand the dynamics of it. So if we make a motion to table, what does that do?
We vote on the tabling of the motion.
And then we're going to table it for, till next meeting? Or do we have to vote on this tonight?
Well, we can wait till we hear what she says, correct, Mr. Solicitor?
And then re-bring up a motion?
No, we can't. We've had public comment already. We're in an action mode. The question is, if we table the motion, the motion is off the table. Somebody wants to make a secondary motion, we can.
I move that we table this.
All right, all those, do I need a second for that? Mr. Solicitor? Do I have a second to table a motion? Second to table a motion, all right. All those in favor of tabling this motion for the approval of the compensation plan as for the tax collectors for 2014, 2018, per Item 06-13? Say.
Aye.
Aye.
One nay?
I have a no.
Two nays? Well, you're getting me confused. Bob, would you mind calling a roll, please?
Okay, Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Lattick?
Yes.
Mr. Kerr?
To table the motion?
Table the motion.
Table the motion. No, table the motion and then we'll go from there. Yes.
Excuse me, I was distracted for a minute.
Table the motion, yes or no?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
No.
Mrs. Leonard?
No.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Shapinski?
Yes.
So the motion is now tabled. Would like, someone else like to make another motion?
I would like to hear from the tax collector to see what.
I don't know if that's an appropriate procedure, this venture, since we're in action mode.
All right, so then, can we table this until another meeting, till we have an opportunity?
No, we got to vote on it tonight.
I mean.
We've tabled the motion, I want to know if somebody wants to make a secondary motion or we're going to move on.
Yes, I want to make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Miniscalco, what is your motion?
Originally, at our first finance meeting, we recommend, we discussed giving them a freeze for two years, a 15 cent increase the third year, and a 15 cent increase in the fourth year. And that is my motion. That's what I'm in favor of.
All right, so for clarity's sake, wait a minute. All right, I want to make sure the motion stands as it is. We're going to approve a compensation plan for the tax collectors for the 2014-2018 item, which includes the first two years of a zero increase and then the last two years as a 15 cent per increase?
Yes.
For the regular receipt? Is that what it's called, Bob?
That's regular, and it excludes line Lexington.
Regular receipt, tax part, yeah. That includes line Lexington. Excludes line Lexington, which is one, a flat rate. Is that the motion? Do I have a second for that motion? Do you want to second that motion? Any discussions on the new motion now?
I think it's fair. I have a discussion.
Go ahead, Mr. O'Donnell.
Do I have the floor?
Yes, you do, Mr. O'Donnell.
Money's tight. It's been brought out by everybody. You know, we're struggling with a $10 million deficit. Last year, you were paid $40,000 just from the North Penn School District, not counting your local and county. So your compensation could be double that.
Well, you have the floor.
Eighty, ninety thousand dollars. That's the highest. You know, last year, we paid $153,000, including your social security for that, which is, everybody needs to know, the social security on top of that. By law, we have to pay social security on top of the compensation we just paid. I think, due to the economic times, I'm recommending, my own two senses, keep things the way they were at 415 across the board, keep it the way it was for last year.
Well, so you'll be voting no.
I'll be voting no.
I understand your point. Any other comments at this point?
Just, just so I'm sure. At the moment, it's $4.15.
Correct.
Correct.
That's where we are.
And it's been that way for the past four years?
For two years.
Two years, okay. Two years. So four years ago, it was, it was level.
Four dollars.
And then it was 15 cents, $4.
In the last four, yeah, in the last four-year cycle for them, it was at $4 for the first two years and then 4.15.
Okay, so, so we are looking at a four-year cycle here.
Right, the next four years. Compensation must be set before they take office or proceed to office.
No, I understand that. That's why we're voting tonight. But, so it's $4.15 for the next two years, and then it goes up to $4.30, the two out years.
The two last years would be a 15 cent increase each year, which goes to, yes.
That's for the one tier.
$4.30. $4.30 for the last two years.
So 15 cents.
That's for the regular tier, and then for the interim tier.
Nothing changes.
No one made a recommendation for the change in the interims or liens or multiples, I think what they call it.
All right, so we're just voting for a change in the regular fee?
Right, correct.
In the regular fee?
Correct.
From $4.15 in year three and four to $4.30.
Thirty cents. That's what I understand that motion. Was that what you understood?
That's correct.
I'm going to clarify that.
That's correct, 15 cents. Any other comments to this issue from the board, since we're in public action?
Did you want to say something?
Any other comments?
No.
Bob, just to be real fast. Bob, what did you say earlier? The, the numbers were for the surrounding school districts with the pan, like $3 or something like that?
We've looked at a number of other school districts, and you have a range. In Montgomery County, you have a number of them in the same range. In other counties, you can find, nearby, you can find rates of $3.
Yeah, I thought you earlier had made a comment like 3, 3 and 1/4, 3.50. And North Penn was, once I heard that.
Some both county districts were in the threes.
Once I heard that, I thought North Penn is way over the top.
Any other comment? Any other comment?
No.
All right, I'm going to call the motion. Everybody understand what the motion is? Is any clarity here to this? We're in a public action. We, we already had public rosh. No, I'd appreciate that, but we gave public time to speak. We're in action mode, and I don't want to open the floor again. No, that's in a work session. This is an action. That's why I called the audience to sit in the beginning. I gave everyone time to speak to the motion. So we have a motion for a two-year freeze and then an increase of 15 cents per year